She's not going to be here.
What is that?
Real mother.
Oh.
Not Kimberly, it's either one of them. Ryan, Ryan.
Yeah. Well, can I have a one?
Is thirty the minimum?
That's right.
Should we get started?
Yeah. And you know audience.
What is this, my baby?
Um, so just call, submit the order. At five fifty-nine. Okay, so. Carla, can you do the poll?
Commissioner Sparks, present. Commissioner Berman, Commissioner Gilardi.
Here.
Vice Chair Long.
Here.
Chair Moffett.
And the landing. This city of Kattati recognizes that we're on the ancestral lands of the coastal new park, who are the original caretakers of this area. We are to certainly acknowledge the indigenous people who have been supporting and maintaining a relationship on this land as knowledge keepers for millennia. This serves, this acknowledgement does not take the place of authentic relationships with indigenous communities, but serves as a gesture of respect to the land we are on. And the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands on mission, on your ground, indivisible, with liberty and access to all.
Okay, and we are, the approval of the minutes from August eighteen, just do a, what's that called?
Motion?
Motion, yes.
I motion to, uh, I motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, and then all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes? Any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes this evening.
Okay. Now we are going to open it up to public comment about any items that are not on the agenda. No one is present here, so we'll see if there's anybody on Zoom that would like to make a comment?
No attendees on Zoom at this time.
Okay. And then matters at hand, so we'll just jump right into it.
Great, uh, thank you Vice Chair Long. Uh, Carla, do we have the way to advance the slides remote?
Oh, yeah.
So there, this evening's presentation has got a lot of technical materials, so bear with me, the slide deck is kind of long. I'll try to not, um, be too redundant in the presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions at the end, but I do want to get through kind of a lot of material, so, um, thank you in advance for your patience. Um, but yeah, so this evening's, um, uh, matters at hand item A, or eight A, is a workshop to discuss implementation of the transit-oriented communities policies which are coming down from the Association of Bay Area Governments, um, and Metropolitan Transportation Commission. See if I can get this to advance. So in summary, uh, we're going to be considering changes to zoning rules, um, on certain properties within a half-mile radius of the smart station, uh, and potentially citywide. Some of the changes are proposed to be citywide, but there is flexibility in that, and that's part of the input we want to get from commission tonight. There is a lot of nuance to the policy, but at a high level and in summary, uh, these changes would make residential densities, uh, of twenty-five to thirty-five units per acre, which is pretty significant for Kattati. It would provide a maximum number of parking spaces of one and, one point five parking spaces per single family, or I'm sorry, per residential unit, and four spaces per four thousand, uh, square feet of commercial space, or one space per two hundred and fifty square feet, and there is no parking minimums for any use, uh, in this proposed area. There's also proposed to be a commercial floor area of, uh, range of one to three, and so what that means is a floor area ratio is the amount of building covering a parcel, and so if you had a one-acre lot, a one-point-oh floor area ratio, they could cover the entire lot with building and then go up to a three-point-oh. So very intense, um, development, um, intensity for suburban communities. Uh, and then there's implementation of a number of, uh, housing protection, production, and preservation policies, or the three Ps of housing. You, you all will start to hear that term more and more as kind of housing policy drumbeat continues, and I'm going to kind of diverge on that a little bit, uh, after I finish presenting, um, a summary of the TOC policies. There's also some commercial stabilization policies proposed, additional parking management strategies, uh, some thoughts about how to improve and increase park, uh, circulation and access to any of the station areas. For us, it's the smart station. And then lastly, um, because staff always tries to take advantage of ordinance work, we are proposing some code cleanup, and we'll talk about that, uh, after we get through the TOC policy. So just kind of stepping back, I want to kind of highlight some of the trends in state housing law, the commissioners will be familiar with these, but, um, for over the last five years, the state has been passing a significant number of legislation every year, uh, that has kind of reduced or removed local control from housing development. Parking limitations have been, um, kind of more and more passed down, especially near transit. Certain types of affordable housing projects, and then even getting to market rate housing projects are, uh, now becoming by right, so there's no required public process in some instances. Uh, the city is expected to fully support housing development at all affordability levels and, uh, seek to get inclusionary housing or, or affordable units included within market rate units at about fifteen percent, and then, um, to intensify, uh, land uses around transit, which is this transit-oriented communities, or you'll also hear TOD, Transit-Oriented Development Policies, which is the primary focus of tonight's meeting. Um, I do want to highlight, uh, this slide, this, an artist has taken to every year creating a graphic that shows all of the housing bills that have been proposed to, by the legislature. Uh, this is twenty-twenty-fives, this is as of April. Not all of these bills passed, but this is just, I, I, you know, I highlight this bill every year when we have these conversations or this slide, and every year it's gotten more and more crowded, there's less cartoon and more text, uh, because frankly, the legislature, you know, that drumbeat, as I mentioned, has continued to increase, uh, about the amount of laws that we're respect, we're required to respond to, particularly regarding housing development and, uh, and the supporting kind of ancillary elements. So this is this year's, and, um, we'll see how next year's looks. But so trying to get into some of the background, as summarized in the staff report, in August of twenty-three, the city initiated an update to the Santero Way specific plan. The neighborhood around the smart station has been planned since, um, two thousand and one for intensified development, recognizing the benefits of transit, uh, in that area. Um, the twenty, the two thousand and one plan was outdated, uh, we hadn't seen a lot of development to fully implement the plan, so we took the time to update that with a grant. After we got that pos, policy process going, uh, ABAG MTC published the first draft of these TOC policies, so we were kind of already starting on our path with the Santero Way update, and then ABAG MTC said, hey, this is the things we really want you to focus on in transit-oriented planning. As we moved through the process for Santero Way, we expanded on the SEQA work that we were doing, we did an environmental impact report for the Santero Way specific plan, but in April of twenty-four, we brought it before the commission to expand the scope of that, to include future transit-oriented communities policies, what we're here to discuss tonight, because we knew that we needed to act on that. Whether it gets approved or denied, we wanted to make sure that the environmental impacts of that got analyzed, so that way we would be able to implement these in the future as we were, um, moving down the line for compliance. In February of this year, um, the Santero Way specific plan update was adopted, the commission adopted it, or recommended the council adopted, and it was permanently put in place. The specific plan is a higher-level, um, planning document, it doesn't get kind of to the nitty-gritty of some of the zoning policies, the really nuts and bolts level, so we were always anticipating bringing a zoning update to implement that plan, but we are also now, uh, trying to expand it slightly to address the other, uh, policies within, or sorry, parcels within the half-mile radius of the smart station that also fall under the TOC kind of umbrella as expected by ABAG and MTC. Just this year in May of twenty-five, that policy was finalized, uh, and one of the things that it does say is cities who are not seen as compliant with TOC, uh, are not going to be able to receive their one Bay Area grant funds, and that's the primary outside source of funding that the city is used to improve our infrastructure, so our, uh, primarily streets projects, so the sidewalk gap closure, all the street paving projects that also result in restriping to get bike lanes, et cetera, all of those, uh, generally benefit from one Bay Area grant funds, it's been over a million dollars a year for the city, so we see it as very, very important, uh, and so we've been moving through this TOC policy, uh, implementation, and as a part of that, we, uh, presented to a neighborhood meeting here in the, uh, chamber that we held on June twenty-fifth, we sent out, uh, over a thousand notices to that, we included Rona Park residents, because while they won't be affected by Kattati's TOC, um, they're directly adjacent to parcels that will be, and we felt that it was important for everybody in that circle to understand what was being proposed and what was coming. This slide right here shows that half-mile radius, uh, so the smart station is kind of right in the middle, and then the far western boundary, so kind of going towards the southwest corner, uh, happens to land right around La Salle Avenue, so right there, uh, at the smart, I'm sorry, at the Oliver Shopping Center, uh, that's kind of that bigger parcel in the bottom left corner that's got the hash marks. So all of the parcels there that have the hash marks are included, are proposed to be included in the Santero Way and TOC zoning effort, this is a zoomed-in version of that, so it shows all of the properties in the, um, Santero Way specific plan, and then eight additional parcels, uh, heading west on East Kattati Avenue that are also proposed to be included. One of the things that I think ABAG MTC recognized is that, um, there's going to be a lot of existing neighborhoods that are built within this half-mile radius, and they've allowed the city to exclude parcels that are developed with current residential units, uh, from these TOC requirements, and so what that allows us to do is our single-family neighborhoods that are within a half-mile don't have to all automatically or all of a sudden be zoned twenty-five to thirty-five units to the acre. So we're proposing to exclude all of those that are developed with residential units and just include essentially the commercial parcels on East Kattati Avenue in addition to those that are already in the Santero specific plan, so just as a way to provide some context of kind of how we're carving out that half-mile radius.
What, the ones outside of there have the hash marks?
So we were, uh, initially, this graphic is actually part of the Santero Way EIR, that's a great question, so we were initially looking at including those parcels, because those are properties that, um, have indicated some interest in development or redevelopment, um, whether they're residential or commercial, but the owners have expressed interest in projects, the development projects on them, and so we wanted to maybe consider taking advantage of, of upzoning those, however, um, we didn't get some of the environmental benefits, uh, that were provided with the TOC policy, so essentially, um, you kind of got a pass on your, um, VMT impacts for areas within that half-mile radius, because it was assumed you had built-in VMT mitigation, vehicle miles traveled, so essentially traffic mitigation. When you are within that half-mile radius, just outside of that half-mile radius, you weren't given the environmental, uh, benefits or kind of the reduced, um, the assumed reduced impacts of traffic, and so if we would have included those parcels, the EIR would have required a lot more traffic mitigation, um, and so we decided to exclude those because we didn't get that benefit. Okay, so then this is just an aerial photo to put some, like, a real image to it, and it shows all the parcels that are within the Santero Way specific plan, surrounded in yellow, and then those eight additional parcels, um, surrounded in blue that are proposed to be included in the TOC policy, just again, to additional context and identifying which properties we're actually talking about, and also showing that all the ones that are developed with homes are not proposed to be included. Through the Santero Way specific plan process, you know, we had a lot of outreach and community engagement, this is a summary of the things that we heard, you know, parking was the number-one concern, especially down in the Santero neighborhood specifically, they have a lot of unique parking challenges just to their neighborhood, but then also, um, concerns over how the mix of land uses would really work, um, the expectation that impacts associated with intensifying those, those land uses are thought about and really tried to be managed. Obviously, as you're increasing more, uh, homes, you need to man, make sure that during evacuation, those folks can get out, and there's thought put into how evacuation is going to be managed. While, you know, this level of development is a different style, there once, there was some goals to maintaining architectural consistency across, uh, development that occurs, uh, that benefits from this, this, uh, additional intensification, um, still want those folks to be able to have access to open space and park space, uh, affordable housing, maintaining some affordable housing units and not just allowing, you know, pure market rate projects, and then also getting a mix of ownership and rental is really important to the folks that we talked to, um, as we went through the Santero Way specific plan process. So now this part of the presentation is proposed to kind of get into the actual specifics of what is being proposed in the TOC compliance kind of matrix. We've talked about the minimum residential and commercial densities, uh, but then there's also some specifics around these, um, the three Ps of housing, as we talked about, um, again, we're going to talk about parking management and, uh, how we're going to gain access and circulation improvement to the smart station. We are proposing to implement, uh, a lot of this additional zoning work through the creation of two new zoning districts, one of which is going to be called the Santero Way, Santero Way, and that's kind of the, the southern portion of the Santero Way neighborhood around that cul-de-sac and what's already been developed with residential units. We wanted them to get their own kind of zoning district that maintains the character that they have and kind of builds on it for the rest of the uni, of the properties down on Santero Way. Right now, there's, uh, some undeveloped, or underdeveloped lots, so there's an old warehouse that's not being utilized, and then, uh, many storage down there. As that redevelops, we want the, that development to respect those existing homes that have already been built there, uh, and reflect kind of their unique character, and then as you get further north along Santero, uh, we're proposing a district called Transit-Oriented Communities, or TOC District, and that acknowledges, uh, kind of more the commercial frontage of, of East Kattati Avenue and kind of the goal of feathering development, so as you're, you know, on the commercial strip of East Kattati, it can be more intense and more commercial, and then it feathers as you get back into the Santero neighborhood is the goal. So we're proposing to create two new zoning districts, um, to implement the TOC policies.
Noah, are you anticipating then in the Santero Way zoning, that includes that back warehouse area and that back part of the property, there'll be no, no retail, or?
Uh, limited retail, so there is still some retail, and the, the community was fine with some, but they didn't want it to be the same as what would front onto East Kattati. Yeah. And there also, to, to speak to that, there was also some interest in allowing those buildings to be reused for something else versus sit vacant, and so there are some uses that would be allowed there that could move right into those existing uses, that like a gym is allowed, and there's some other uses summarized in the land use tables, uh, starting on packet page. Sorry. Eighteen, so if you look, there's the TOC, uh, district, and then the SW or Santero Way district, and those talk about the uses that are allowed to be, uh, kind of move into those existing buildings, uh, the ones that have the asterisk are, I, the goal was to kind of bridge that gap, because one of the concerns we actually heard was just having those buildings vacant draws a lot of kind of issues to the neighborhood that, um, are more negative from their perspective than the additional traffic and parking and kind of activity use, or nuisance kind of issues that would be generated through having them operating as a commercial business. So that was something we tried to be thoughtful about.
Can you explain one more time the asterisk?
Oh, so the asterisk is, uh, proposed to be a use type that could move into an existing building, but not necessarily, um, one that would be allowed if it was to redevelop, like, from the ground up, like, so there's a, a good example is the warehouse building down on the left side, so a construction contractor is allowed with a use permit in that building under the current proposal. Uh, it's anticipated that a contractor would not be operating from that if it were to redevelop, but because right now it's just an empty warehouse building, having that type of a use allowed to take advantage of that existing building was seen as a benefit, because then you would have activity, people would be going there every day, and then, uh, it would kind of address some of the concerns of vagrancy or homeless impacts that they've kind of been experiencing with people just kind of occupying those existing buildings.
Okay, got it, so otherwise that use would not be allowed, but if it's going into an existing building, we'll make an exception?
Correct, correct, and so you'll see, like, uh, on page nineteen, a, a contractor, food and beverage product manufacturing, furniture and fixtures manufacturing, so it's trying to acknowledge that there's warehouse buildings back there, and that's the type of use that'll move into that, and then the note on the bottom of page twenty-five is tied to that asterisk, where it says, use is only allowed in existing structures, structures as interim occupancy until the property is redeveloped.
Okay, yeah, I read that, and I was like, I don't fully understand that, but that explanation makes sense, so, thank you.
Yeah. And so, um, getting back to TOC specifically, uh, because this is a proposed for the entire Bay Area, they created tiers, and so we're in tier four, so as you read through or read through the packet material, any reference to tier four is, uh, kind of the least intense transit, you know, so smart station, the North Bay essentially, um, some of the compliance standards are mandated, uh, like the density and parking that we've talked about, but others are, can be selected from a menu of options, and so that's where in the staff report, uh, there was a list of, of, um, policies under each of the three Ps, and then the one that staff is recommending is highlighted, and I'm going to discuss some of the specifics as to why and how we got to that recommendation. And then you'll see also, the TOC policy is required for the properties within a half-mile radius, but in some instances, staff is recommending that they be approved citywide. Some of that has to do with just to make it easy to implement, because it's hard to have a pol, like a parking policy that only lives in one part of the, of town, but in other ways, um, because the overall direction of some of the state housing policies that have been pushing down on us, have reduced parking in general, and have allowed residential by right in some instances, we see some of those tools as actually helpful citywide as we deal with some of those impacts of reduced parking and intense residential development that's kind of being allowed by right or pushed down from the state. So we're going to try to take advantage of some of these things to address concerns and impacts that we hear more generally, uh, throughout the city, and I'll talk about examples of that. So, uh, getting into the production list, so, um, there's a list of, you know, seven ways that we could comply with TOC production requirements. Staff is proposing the, the underlined versions there, the ones that are fully underlined, to use public land for affordable housing, uh, and the purchase of one-twenty East Kattati Avenue would satisfy that requirement, because we bought the lot directly across from the fire station, and we're proposing to use it for a hundred percent affordable housing project, that project will check that box, and so one of the things from staff is, we want to take advantage of the things we're already doing to deep, to, for compliance, and so that's one that we're proposing, and then the other is this streamlined entitlement processes, so, um, under current state law SB three-thirty, you know, you can only have five meetings in order to get to a decision, and a project is vested when it's deemed complete, meaning they're subject to the rules and the fees in place when they're deemed complete, not when they're approved, so sometimes that can be about a year difference, and so it can make real benefits. We're already under that law, we know how to work with it, uh, our process, I've never seen it take five hearings, and so we think we could pretty easily comply with that, uh, and, uh, right now SB three-thirty is proposed to expire at twenty-thirty, so we kind of already have to live with that for a number of years, so from the staff perspective, it made sense to just comply with that, to, to be, um, check the box for production compliance from the TOC policy. Uh, the other two that are partially underlined there, the fifteen percent inclusionary housing, uh, and the, and the Kattati density bonus, we could, we think, we think we could use those to comply, but it would require more changes from what we're currently doing. So right now, our inclusionary housing is required to be fifteen percent, so if somebody's proposing a project of a hundred units, fifteen of them have to be affordable housing, but we provide more flexibility targeted towards our arena for the income levels of those fifteen percent. This would require that across all the units, it averages at eighty percent affordability levels of AMI, so it would be less flexible for how we meet our arena, and so from staff's perspective, it's, I, we think the best way to, to comply would be with, again, the, the, using one-twenty East Kattati Avenue and the SB three-thirty streamlined entitlement approach. There's also a consideration that we could try to make our Kattati density bonus policies fit those requirements, but there are other things that we would have to do that would, again, kind of move past where we've already gotten ourselves with that policy and, and make it more, um, give ourselves less control over development, and so based on what we've heard from everybody in the community and the council, um, we think these two that we're proposing are the best fit. If you're interested in doing me re, more research on the inclusionary housing or reading up on a little bit on the, on the overlay zones, those are, uh, there's complete summaries of those, whole one-page analysis on page eighty-seven and page ninety-two of the packet, so each of these one-line items has a corresponding full-on policy discussion in one of the attachments in the back of the sta, of the packet.
The, this TOC policies, it's kind of a one-time thing, where it'll be approved and implemented, and we won't revisit it down the road.
So that's a good question, so, um... So compliance is going to be measured, oh, I didn't, I didn't include it in a, as an attachment, compliance is anticipated to be measured on a spectrum between forty points as being the minimum you can have and still get any, uh, one Bay Area grant money, and I think seventy points being... And I think seventy points being fully compliant and making you the most competitive for those grant funds. We s-, we see, um, every jurisdiction in the whole Bay Area and, but definitely in Sonoma County kind of being graded on that spectrum. And once you get your grades for next year's Bay Area grant money, a lot of cities are going to probably try to iterate on this to get, uh, improve their, um, compliance number to make themselves more competitive for grant money. What we've proposed today, we feel like we will be nearly fully compliant, if not fully compliant. We won't really know that until we get graded by A-BAG MTC. And I couldn't submit to be graded by them until we adopt it. So it's a little bit of a chicken or the egg. I have met with them. I have run through all of these with them. It seems like we're going to get to e-, either full compliance or very near full compliance, but we won't really know for certain until they grade us. After we get that grade, we can decide to revisit it if we need to.
And that grade is, it just stays with it? There's no, a year after year, we'll continue to get that funding based on that one grade?
Uh, well, I think it's likely to be, um,
Be competitive for funding?
Exactly. And also, uh, so they'll grade us for, um, one Bay Area grant. It's like cycle four, which is twenty twenty-six. And then the next cycle, we'll get a separate grade. So we may want to make some changes in that time. Um, or other cities may make some changes to bring us, themselves more even with us. And so at that time, we may want to revisit it. But it will be each funding cycle will get its own grade. And so the first one will be next year in twenty twenty-six.
Is there a deadline that we have to get this approved before we can qualify for the grade?
February of twenty-six is when we have to be done. And, but that's when they're going to be doing the grading. And so I have to get all of this buttoned up. And they actually have a compliance portal that we have to submit all of our, uh, documentation through for each one of these. And then it's in their court to review and grade it. We'll probably have some back and forth for clarity. And so given that that's in February and we're going to have the holidays, staff doesn't want to slip too much beyond, um, the timeline. We're, our plan is to, as soon as we get input from the commission and council, we're going to flip it into an ordinance and run that through the process and hope to have that done before December or by December.
Okay.
So getting into preservation. Um, again, the two underlined, uh, are, uh, areas that we, actually our current code is compliant. So we don't need to make any changes for that. So the condo conversion restrictions, oh, I'm sorry. We do need to make a slight change for the condominium conversion ordinance. Um, that is on page thirty-five of the packet. And it's the red line to section seventeen point seven four point zero three zero. From the staff pa-, some of the staff perspective, it's very minor changes to the language. Um, just adding some additional requirements about condominium conversion and requirements, uh, for affordability that were based on the, what was pushed down on us from the policy. Um, it also implements a commitment we've made in our housing element. So we already told the state that we were going to do this. So again, staff's looking for opportunities to double count and we saw that as one of those opportunities. Um, our existing mobile home preservation regulations are adequate and that also implements our housing element. So no changes needed to the mobile home park, uh, ordinance language. Um, under preservation policies more broadly, the state was really, or A-BAG MTC was really looking for a lot of commit, funding commitments. That puts us in a tough place because our budget was approved back, you know, uh, in June. Uh, and they also are hoping for a four-year commitment. Well, we can't commit the council to four years of funding with these policies. And so some of the things they're asking for didn't really reflect the require, or the kind of realities of how we do our business here at the local government level. And so that was all, another kind of reason or thought process staff had in how we're proposing to comply. One of the preservation ordinances changes was around single-room occupancy units. We don't have single-room occupancy development in Cattati, so that just wasn't an option for us. And then the last one, this code enforcement to prevent displacement. We are actually proposing to do that with, uh, our next, uh, protection policy, but they don't let you double count internally to their own. So that one wasn't an option for, um, preservation. So, moving on to, uh, protection. Um, we're proposing again to use our current rent stabilization regarding the mobile home park because that did count and it did, it was allowed to double count through these, uh, policies. And then also to, uh, update our code enforcement practices to prevent somebody from being displaced from their home because of code enforcement. Or if the housing or if the, the code issue is so significant, uh, that the, the landlord would actually have to put them up in a, in an alternative, um, housing situation until they fix whatever was identified to be so, um, kind of unsafe for the person to live in, um, that they have to fix it before they can, the person can move back in or the family.
Wh- what if, uh, the homeowner is, like, what if it's owned by the person who lives in it?
So that would be a challenging situation we would have to address. Um, but the goal would be to keep somebody in their home and not red-tag it, uh, and have them for, be forced to move out. That's a good question though. I mean, hopefully we would be able to, um, get involved with that home before it fell in such a state of disrepair that they wouldn't be able to live in it. That's a good point and I should bring up, we also have a, a commitment in our housing element to create a loan program for low-income homeowners to be able to fix up their properties, to be able to keep them in their homes. Uh, and that is, it would address exactly what you're talking about. So the goal is, you know, if somebody's heat goes out, which is a subcentered housing situation that technically somebody's not allowed to live in a house that doesn't have heat or running water, maybe their water line broke. We would have a loan program set up that would be adequate to fund a loan for them to be able to buy a new heater or replace their water line, uh, that which would keep them in their home, even though they may not have had the funds to pay for that upfront. And that's, that's the goal of that program. And I, I've seen that work, uh, in other jurisdictions I've worked in.
Mm-hmm, okay. And we actually do have that program here in Cattati?
We have the commitment to do it and we have the funding set up in the Affordable Housing Fund. Staff is working on getting that program going with Administrative Services.
Got it, okay.
Yeah. Um, another one that there is the potential to use would be, uh, this right to return. So there's some state law now that says, you know, if I live in a rental unit, um, that ends up getting, uh, demolished to, to facilitate redevelopment and building more homes, I have a right to return back to that property to rent one of the future homes or buy one of the future homes if I can. And if I'm low income, I have the right to plug in at that low income level on one of the units that are to be built. So that is a commitment, the right to return. It is something we might be able to meet. So, uh, if the commission is interested in giving staff direction to explore that more, we're happy to. Uh, because we already are, we're so close to meeting the requirements, um, in the other two areas and we're already implementing one of them with the housing element program, staff is recommending the code enforcement and the rent stabilization.
I was just going to ask about the anti-harassment.
Yeah, that's a good question. So, um, because we're so small, a lot of the, um, kind of landlord-tenant relations issues, uh, those types of things, we actually defer out to either legal aid of Sonoma County or we lean on, um, the Community Development Commission at the county, their housing authority to assist with, with those things. Uh, some of the requirements that are being pushed through the TOC don't really acknowledge, or acknowledge or, um, anticipate that model. And so it required the city to dedicate a certain amount of funding towards legal aid and those types of things for anti-harassment issues for tenants. And I, from the staff perspective, we didn't have the capacity to meet the expectations of that funding amount. And I have a table that shows the expectations for the funding amount. I realize I should have shown that at the beginning, uh, getting into this. But when we get to the end of the policy stuff, I'll show you. There's not only they're asking for dedicated funding, but it's in certain amounts. And so you'll see for a small jurisdiction, some of those numbers are pretty challenging.
Um, I was going to ask, do we get extra points if we meet more than the minimum criteria for a certain policy?
Because they haven't graded us yet, I'm not sure. But, um, my goal is to set this up to be as competitive as possible.
Okay.
So, uh, it's not just about housing. Um, because the policy also intensifies development in commercial areas, there is an expectation that we do some things to support our businesses. One of the challenges is the, a lot of the things that they're proposing us to do, staff actually just struggled with how we would actually implement. So one of them is to get a, give a preference policy for small business and nonprofit businesses to move into new commercial spaces. I was struggling with how I would even implement such a thing. Uh, if somebody came in and, and built a new office development, for example, how we would require them to give preference to, uh, certain business over another one? It just seemed really challenging. Or as an example, what if somebody, a, a specific business bought a property to build their own office and then we told them, well, you actually have to make some space for somebody else within your office space? It just seemed really challenging. Similarly, to the other housing ones, there were some that required funding. And so when we saw that the office, uh, or the, um, business advocate to have a dedicated kind of alms budsmen or at our, um, liaison between the city and the businesses, that seemed like something that we could do with our current staffing levels. And also was consistent with what we committed to do with the city council for our work plan for this year, to try to do some economic development work, to reach out to businesses, hear what their issues are and make some, uh, proposed changes to address them. So we're proposing to utilize this, uh, small business, um, alms budsmen is the term that we're, we put in the policy. We're going to dial it in a little bit better and, and come up, not an advocate, but maybe a liaison or some other term and create that program in our department to where if a business approaches us, they'll get a dedicated staff member attached to them to work with them through their issue until it's resolved or we've at least landed on some type of solution.
Um, for the preference policies, do you like, do you think it could be as simple as saying we would prefer this but not require it?
There's like, the, it got really specific and I'll see if I can find the, uh, the write-up on it.
I think I opened right up to it, page one forty-three. Now maybe not.
Yeah, so one forty-three is the beginning of the, the policy list. So one of them is a small business nonprofit overlay. So creating a specific overlay district to try to stop them from being displaced as properties redevelop. That kind of was the same as preference, right? Because it would allow them the right to come back to those, uh, redeveloped business properties. The preference policy is on the top of packet page one forty-four. And then there's a financial assistance policy for small business and nonprofits. Obviously that's a funding commitment, um, on the bottom of one forty-four. And then the, uh, small business advocate office, again, we're not going to call it an advocate, but that's at the bottom of one forty-five. And so there's just a lot of specifics in how they expect us to run these to be compliant.
I see. It says, um, the preference policy, you offer them, right, a first offer? Is what it says, so.
And so one of the challenges for, for us is we're not involved in real estate transactions.
Right.
So how we would even ensure that happened, you know? It would be very difficult.
Yeah, okay.
So then, uh, kind of changing gears a little bit, getting into, um, a little like less of a menu of options. Um, there's a, a kind of a laundry list of expectations for parking management. As we've talked about, there's, you know, residential and commercial minimums and maximums. There's allowing shared parking between different land uses, which Cattati already does. We did that when we updated our mixed-use, um, zoning policy to kind of acknowledge that, you know, an office and residential sharing the same parking lot is okay because they generally are there at different times. And so, you know, you can share parking. The new requirements are to allow unbundled parking. So you're allowed to rent a home or rent an apartment separate from paying for the parking space. So if you don't have a car, then you could not rent the parking space, right? And, uh, that also facilitates shared parking with the property owner being able to lease it maybe to an adjacent use that needs more parking. Also to bump up the residential and commercial bicycle standards. They had a, a new threshold of one space per unit or one space per five thousand square feet for commercial. It's behind the, um, behind the closed caption there. But it, that is more intense than our current bicycle parking standard. But, uh, staff is proposing that to be citywide, all of those last three policies, because we do see it as a benefit, uh, and a tool to help address some of the reduced parking requirements that the state has been mandating us for residential parking in general in the city.
Question on, on the parking.
Say Sarah rents a, a place, but she doesn't want the parking. Is it, uh, Sarah that rents out the parking space or the property owner that rents out the parking space?
It would be the property owner. So what, what the requirement is, is that, that you have to have a, a price difference between, uh, and it has to be less to rent a, a home without a parking space than with one.
Okay, so then Sarah moves out, Ryan moves in. He wants a parking space, but there's nothing available.
Correct. So the, uh, the policy says that, uh, any, basically any agreement to allow somebody else to rent that space has to have a thirty-day, uh, termination clause.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, good question. Uh, so there is some other parking policy options. Creation of a parking benefit district, uh, trying to essentially add, uh, parking meters for demand responsive part, part, I mean, some things that really are not a suburban tool. Really, that's more of an urban tool or then even just, you know, having metered parking. Staff didn't think the council or commission would be interested in kind of wading into some of those challenging discussions at the time. Uh, but so having a curb, uh, management policy was allowed. Uh, and what that means is basically coming up with ways to address reduced parking and support alternative transportation modes. And so, um, we defined curb demand management in the zoning code. And the idea is just if you're building a new development, whether it's office or residential, you're thoughtful that the curb spaces needs to be used for a variety of things. You know, your Amazon driver needs a place to pull over temporarily. Your Uber driver needs a place to pull over temporarily. Sometimes you can put in, uh, uh, electric, like bicycle or scooter, uh, infrastructure. So somebody right there on the curb, so somebody can walk out of their home or their office, jump on that or vice versa, use it to get to work. Uh, and so curb demand management is a, is a planning term, a transportation term. Uh, and now we've incorporated that into our zoning code and said that new developments have to include elements of that, um, to make sure that these kind of alternative ways of transportation can be facilitated and not just put a parking space or two upfront because you can get broader demand by managing that curb or broader benefits by managing that curb use. Um, so getting into station access and circulation. We're generally compliant here. So, um, we've been compliant with the complete streets policy for two O-BAG cycles already. You know, anytime we touch a street, we are putting in bicycle, pedestrian infrastructure. For prioritizing implementation of active transportation projects, uh, our future capital improvement projects and project conditions are going to require that. So I would encourage the commission to definitely pay attention to that and hold us accountable. But, um, that's something that we'll see as public works and future projects move forward is to prioritize ATP projects within the TOC area. Looking at our, uh, access gap, basically like ways to improve, uh, access to the smart station. We did that with a specific plan update and with our active transportation plan. So we've already complied with that. Uh, and then the last one is, uh, identify mobility hub planning and implementation opportunities in the TOC area. So we are proposing a change. So a mobility hub is a, a term that comes out of Plan Bay Area. Uh, and it's basically acknowledges that a train station or a transit area is a place where all types of mobility users come together. And so you might have a car share. You might have, uh, electric bicycle charging. You might have electric vehicle charging. Uh, you might have a bus stop and you might have a train stop, all in one place. And that's called a mobility hub. And those things, uh, those areas can really serve, uh, to generate activity and be a, not just, uh, area for transit to all come together. But then you can leverage that and have that become an area where maybe there's intensive- but then you can leverage that and have that become an area where maybe there's intensified, uh, commercial uses, right? Because there's so many people always there, it's a good spot to open a business. Or maybe have some community-serving benefits there. You know, a community center located in that location would be able to take advantage of all those things and bring community together. And so, uh, we are proposing to incorporate mobility hub elements into the zoning code uh, and also to highlight, um, and require develop, private development to look for opportunities to expand on mobility hub elements, although it is primarily something that's beneficial to kind of, um, I would say government-owned facilities, because that's where all of these transit things come together. So, we are proposing a, a small code change, just that, uh, future development thinks about those elements and how it can help support mobility hub planning. Okay, so this slide, uh, kinda identifies the philosophy that went into how these recommendations are made. First, you know, the council goals. They've, they've told us how, the, the goals for the city and the, the things they want us to implement. We have adopted policy commitments like in our housing element. So, again, I'm looking for opportunities to, to kind of double dip on meeting the things we've already committed to doing in the housing element. And then also, uh, how we could thread that needle and meet TOC policies with that. Things we've committed to in this year's work plan for our department, uh, like the business alms budsmen program. Um, obviously state mandates, as we talked about with those slides at the beginning. The state is constantly pushing new housing mandates on us. And so, if we're already gonna have to comply with that and we can tell A-BAG MTC that it also is complying with TOC, we're gonna take advantage of that. Uh, and then lastly, it's fundability of, of funding availability and commitment timelines. It's what we talked about. Uh, you know, the city council's already adopted our two-year budget back in June. We can't, uh, disrupt and, and turn that budget upside down by throwing a bunch of new commitments on, uh, uh, the community for compliance with TOC. And I'm sorry, that slide is hard to read, but for production, the expectation in, in the smallest communities like us is a million-dollar commitment. For preservation, it's $500,000 commitment. And for, um, protection, it's $100,000 commitment. We committed a million dollars when we bought, or it was 1.6 million dollars when we bought 120 East Kattati Avenue. So, we can check that box and we've complied with that. But to throw another half a million dollars at preservation or another $100,000 at protection for legal assistance and those types of things, staff didn't feel that that was a, obviously, we don't have the authority to do that. But we also, because we could comply with other things that we've already committed to doing, staff is recommending the commitment kind of regime that we presented. Uh, and this, um, funding commitment definitely went into the thought process as to how we came to those recommendations.
So, question on the funding. So, like the million dollars for, um, the affordable housing, like, is that per year? So, would you have to set aside a million dollars, not like an extra million dollars per year, but would you have to like carry a million dollars? Does, does that make sense?
It does, it does make sense.
Qualify for multiple years, sorry.
Uh, for preservation, I'm sorry, I'd have to get back into the, the details. My un, remembering was that the 1.6 million dollars we committed would satisfy that requirement. Because it, it is a minimum four-year funding per policy by the tier. But I think we comply with that. The other ones, I know had an ongoing funding commitment and I can't remember if the 500,000 and the 100 would, would equal that four-year or if it was annually. And I'll answer that question for the council.
Okay, yeah, like, uh, or would it be like minimum 500,000 in order to meet the requirement? So, like if someone, if we used some of it, we'd have to put more back in or something, like, I don't know.
Well, I know it, it is a minimum commitment of those funds specifically to those policy requirements.
Mm-hmm, okay. Just out of curiosity, I'm not super familiar with the budget numbers. Like what percentage of our budget would that be? Like, is that like a ton of money or is it like a drop in the bucket?
It's a good question. Our annual budget is about 11 million dollars for the whole city.
So, it's pretty substantial, yeah.
And of that, um, portions of it are, you know, employee salaries and health insurance. You know, it's kind of a set number that you can't really, so, so the, what we call the discretionary amount, the amount of money that's actually you can play with is very, very, uh, mu- much smaller percentage of that.
Okay.
10, 11 million dollars.
Got it.
So, uh, that kind of concludes the TOC element of the presentation. Um, the commission saw at the end of the staff-reported discussion about two, uh, proposed changes. Uh, and we have a, a letter was written and, and provided to the coun, uh, the commission on the dais. Through the years, uh, it's been fairly common for tattoo artists to come in and wanna open a business in Kattati. And, uh, currently our zoning code, uh, puts them in a classification called, uh, personal services restricted. And so, it puts, it, it very significantly limits where their businesses can operate. From staff perspective, it's kind of an antiquated perspective on tattoo, maybe what they used to be called tattoo parlors, uh, you know, uh, and paints them with the same brush as like a pawn shop or a fortune teller or, or kind of these other uses that, that have a certain perspective on them, uh, historically. And so, staff is proposing to remove tattoo, what I believe are now called studios, from the restricted classification of personal services and just put them as a personal service. That would make them essentially the same as a salon. So, they would be allowed nearly anywhere in Kattati. It would be a substantial change from where we are currently. But from the staff perspective, where we are currently is fairly antiquated. There's a letter written by a local tattoo artist. He says he's the only one in, in the city, and I believe that's correct. Uh, he moved into a, a former tattoo location, talks about how he renovated it and it's just, he's trying to grow his business kind of beyond that. And he's looked at other locations in town. He wants to stay in Kattati, he's a Kattati resident. And he just, he can't find anything that fits the restricted requirements. So, um, he's supportive of the change, even though it might add kind of competition for him. He talks about how, you know, he's not worried about that. He sees it as a bigger benefit to the community and it's kind of supporting the arts. Uh, and staff would agree and can attest to the fact that we, we get new tattoo businesses coming in, probably a couple per year, and, you know, they're not able to find locations that meet our, our current, um, kind of limited locations. Separately, we're proposing to add a retail tobacco store land use category into our code. And then identify them as not allowed, just so. Uh, we have, uh, tobacco stores, which also kind of smoke shops fall in that category. Uh, they live in a different section of our code, the health and safety code. And so, right now, they're just not even mentioned in the zoning code. And then occasionally, somebody wants to come open up a ta, a tobacco store or a smoke shop, frankly. Uh, and we're like, no, you're not allowed to. And then they argue with us because they're, you know, they're trying to figure out kind of a, a way they can thread the needle. And so, the proposal to include retail tobacco store in the definitions of the zoning code and then into the land use tables and identi, identify them as not allowed is really just to clarify that that is not a use that's allowed in Kattati and we're not supportive of that use and allow staff to clearly point that out to folks when they, uh, ask if we're, if we allow them or not.
So, eliminate the gray area?
Correct, correct. And we have two in operation. They would be able to continue to operate. Um, but if they close down, they would, we would not be able to, um, a new one would not be able to open in their location. Uh, folks are still allowed to sell tobacco products and tobacco-related projects or products as an accessory to their primary use. And so, the commission might remember, we had a convenience store approved for a use permit. Uh, and we kind of were very specific in what, um, percentage of their business could be related to tobacco. And it's 25%, that's in the zoning code. So, you're allowed to sell different things, uh, not be painted with one brush. But as soon as you exceed 25% of either your floor area or your grocery seats, then you become whatever that category is. And that's when we would, uh, maybe ask you to diversify your business offerings or those types of things to, to not meet that definition. All right, and with that, it's recommended that the planning commission consider the proposed changes to implement the TOC policy requirements, provide input and direction to inform the council regarding their adoption. I know that was a lot of information.
I have a couple of questions. Um, because I think it's important that we support small businesses as much as we can. Clarification, Brewery Brew Pub versus Brew Pub. So Brewery Brew Pub is, they have to produce it onsite versus a brew pub?
It's a good question, let me, uh...
And, well, yeah, I'm looking at the table on, um, page 19. But then on page 21 also, under the Santerway area for Brewery Brew Pub, the box is left blank, so I'm assuming that should be a dash in that box. On page 21.
21.
Towards the bottom.
Oh, that should be a dash, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because, uh, it would be allowed up in the TOC area, up close to East Kattati, but not back in the neighborhood in the cul-de-sac.
Okay.
That's correct.
Um, and, um, in the county, micro distilleries are becoming very popular. But I don't see where that's anywhere in this, even though under Santerway, we offer a tasting room. But should we put something in the code as far as micro distilleries?
Uh, we absolutely can, if the commission thinks it's a good idea to. What we would do is we would define it. I would match the similar definitions to other jurisdictions. And then we would create that land use as a way to allow it. And, and it's worth the, just highlighting for the commission and the public, if it's not listed in our zoning code, then it's technically not allowed. So, we wanna have a thoughtful land use table to anticipate kind of future businesses.
What's a micro distillery?
What's that?
What, what's a micro distillery?
Uh, there's a number of them. They make whiskey, gin, vodka.
So, just anything other than beer?
Hard alcohol, yeah.
Got it, okay.
But also the scale. So, it's not like a, a new factory.
Uh, okay.
It's more like a craft size scale.
Gotcha. Yeah, that'd be cool to have in Kattati.
And then, um, looking at, at the warehouse back there, I was kind of surprised that they, um, for Santerway, that they lined out, um, antique or collectible stores. I mean, I think that should be an included use.
Okay.
And the other one I think should be an included use also. Um, I'm assuming under secondhand store, that would cover vintage clothing, which is very popular, especially among young people. Would that tie into that category?
Uh, so, one of the challenges with secondhand is trying to, um, thread the needle where like a vintage clothing store is one thing and then, um, like a, you know...
Like the stores on 116 that have a little of everything.
Correct. So, we're, sometimes you try to thread a needle with, uh, with the zoning code. And the bigger issue is the ones that accept donations. Because a lot of times folks show up with their donations.
Dump them.
And the place is closed and they might dump it. And so, that's, it's, it can be challenging to manage that. But if, if there's a, a thought that maybe the antique or collectible store definition could be sure to capture vintage clothing, that would be a way to kind of still distinguish secondhand store from that accepts donations.
Because you see that in, in a lot of your antique stores, they do have vintage clothing area. So, maybe tie it in there, that's a good idea.
But I like the idea too of, of making sure that we would allow that, because that is a, a very growing trend. And also, I would just, uh, remind the commission, I know this is a lot, it's, it's intended to be a workshop. So, um, now that you've had this presentation, keep your packets and you can go back through some of those, those more detailed summaries of how TOC compliance is proposed to be met by them, by the A-BAG MTC staff. And you could have more nuanced direction, uh, when we bring back the ordinance, if, if you feel like you might have another, might be interested in taking another bite at the apple.
Okay, so we'll get a, a look at the ordinance when it comes?
Correct. Okay, any other questions, Sarah? No?
Surprisingly, no. Not today.
Anybody on Zoom, open it up to public comment?
Thank you, Vice Chair Long, speaking to our Zoom attendees. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon or dial star nine. And it looks like that will end public comment.
Okay. Will we make a motion now? Unless anybody else has any other questions they wanna put out there? Okay. Anybody like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll motion to approve.
With the recommended changes from Commissioner Gilardi?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I would motion to approve with the recommended changes from Commissioner Gilardi.
I second. All right, um, take, go ahead and take a vote.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Commissioner Gilardi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Long?
Yes.
Great. All right.
Next item, that's right. Item B matters at hand.
Yeah, so this is an official zoning code interpretation. The code specifies that, uh, the director is kind of responsible for making formal interpretations of what the code says. And, you know, it's good, a, a good example is, you know, what, what category a specific business falls in. So, a business comes in, they may not fit a, a clear category exactly. So, staff, and it falls on my role to, um, to interpret how that business might fit into which category um, that they would be, you know, defined as. Other times, there's kind of some inconsistencies in the code language or maybe conflicting language. And so, staff has to make an interpretation. Uh, and we run into issues where we're kind of asked to make the same interpretation old, multiple times, but we maybe haven't had time to put together the ordinance to fix the code language yet. And so, uh, official zoning code interpretations, you know, it lives in the code as a tool to, um, allow staff to kind of address these inconsistency and these, these challenges with, with consistent interpretation of the code. So, all the planners and all the staff have the same rules, um, while we, you know, get the time to put together an ordinance to fix things. The, the commission hasn't seen these before. Uh, oftentimes, in some cities, they're just, the interpretation is made by the director because the code gives him, him or her the authority. And it just lives in, um, folks' codebooks as, and when somebody comes to the counter, they have that with them to, to make the interpretation. Uh, I'm a fan of kind of elevating these to the public perception and, and also for the commission to see when, uh, an, uh, interpretation is being made. So, currently, if you look at, um, the design review section of the zoning code, so that's 17.62040, it says that design review approval shall be required for each project requiring approval of a building permit, construction, alteration of a site or landscape design or other similar action affecting, affecting the functional or aesthetic qualities of land or structures. And then it says, except design review isn't required for a project or action determined by the commission or council that not need it, uh, subdivision of four or fewer parcels. And that's essentially it. We have some issues where, uh, and the, the two examples I'm gonna give are, uh, multi-family housing project, the siding, so an apartment building, the siding is failing. They're coming in to replace their siding and they wanna change that material out from maybe horizontal lap siding to vertical board and bat. From the staff perspective, uh, that definitely needs a building permit and it's definitely affecting the aesthet, aesthetic characteristic of the building. But they're just really doing a repair of the material that they already have. And we have these objective design criteria that we've adopted that we've said we want our, um, buildings to look like. And so, it puts staff in a tough place if I re, have to require somebody to pay $5,000 to $7,000 and wait four months to come before the planning commission to ask to essentially make a repair to their property in keeping with adopted rules that we have. Similarly, um, as we're moving to, uh, become more water efficient with our landscaping and also the state has banned ornamental landscaping starting in 2026. also the state has banned ornamental landscaping starting in 2026, so basically lawns will not be allowed in at all for commercial properties. People can still have them at their single-family homes, but, so more and more commercial properties are going to be coming in, ripping out their lawn, and putting in drought-tolerant landscaping. And that's got to comply with the water-efficient landscaping ordinance. So we've already said how you meet our expectations with regards to landscaping designed for water efficiency. Similarly, I would be challenged to tell that person they need to pay $4,000 to $7,000 and wait X number of months to ask to change their lawn out that everybody else is telling them they have to change out. So staff is saying projects that are, get a building permit to do repairs, or efficiency improvements for their landscaping, to move them to either comply with the adopted objective design standards, or implement Welo, do not need to go through design review, they get a building permit, and we'll review for compliance with the rules, and they'll be able to go straight to getting their job done. And the proposal is to save them time and cost, and essentially to eliminate what, in some ways, it would be a redundant process, because we've already said what standards these projects have to comply with through the Welo and the objective design standards. Water-efficient landscape ordinance. So staff just wanted to elevate this to the commission, so that way you might see an apartment project that is just redoing their siding, and frankly, most people may not even notice, except say, oh, that looks different now, because it went from horizontal to board and bat, or something like that. But from the staff perspective, it's more of a repair than it is a design change, although the appearance could be different because the material is different. We want to be able to support these businesses. And then the last thing is, there's been some new requirements since that Berkeley balcony collapse, where all the students fell and some students died. And so now those decks are having to get annual inspections and certifications, and we do anticipate seeing some changes in the design of those decks to make them safer for their attachment to the building. Similarly, we don't want to have to put that project through design review for them to make that safety repair, and they're going to do it in a way that complies with the objective standards anyway, because they have to. So those are the types of projects that we're going to say do not need design review, and can go straight to building permit. And the commission may start to see those, and the council, but we wanted to basically publicly acknowledge that we are making that interpretation. We're going to work on our ordinance to try to clarify it a little bit, but in the meantime, if somebody comes in to do a repair on their siding, or their deck, or their landscaping, that's not going to be brought before the commission as a design, unless they're doing an addition or really making a real change from the staff perspective. Uh, so multifamily residential and commercial buildings, that's the goal, not single-family. Single-family already kind of has that benefit where they just go straight to a building permit.
What about painting, like exterior painting?
Yeah, we don't regulate paint color. So again, you know, most of the change somebody sees is if they change the color in the building, and so that already wouldn't go through design review anyway.
Yeah, it seems like it's one of those things that'll be eliminating red tape that people complain about, so.
That's the goal.
Streamlining things, making it easier, keeping, you know, communications and relationships between the city and businesses more friendly. It's, I think it's a good idea.
Great, that's absolutely the goal.
Is it also going to result in a loss of income for the city?
It will reduce some fees that the city gets to cover our design review costs. Our department is what we call cost recovery, so if you propose a project that we have to review, you have to pay all of our costs. And so we could get a reduction in the amount of projects that have to come through the planning department. So that would reduce the fees somewhat, but in the big picture, we have plenty to keep us busy. And to Commissioner Gilardi's point, we see it as really a benefit, and also encouraging those repair jobs to happen versus somebody waiting on them.
Yeah, well, and if the purpose of collecting the fee is to offset work, and we're not doing that work, then, yeah, no need to collect the fee.
Correct, and they still would pay all the building permit fees, and all that time would definitely be covered, and all the work would still be inspected, all those.
Yeah, I like, I like that idea. So just to clarify my understanding, the community development director, I U, at this time, would be responsible for kind of making that determination of whether it needs to go escalate to design review, or can just, you can just make the call then and there?
Correct, but it's also limited to just those, you know, material changes, landscape changes, and very limited scope. The balcony, I am comfortable making design changes to a balcony that's being made to make it safer. We think that's a benefit to the community.
Okay, great.
That was, sorry, I was going to ask that question. The criteria is material changes and landscaping.
Correct, correct, yeah. Also, like if somebody had a tile roof, and they were trying, they had to change that material, some tiles are now hard to get, those types of things. Technically, that's an aesthetic change that needs a building permit, so it could be interpreted to fall under needing design review as well.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions?
No.
Do we have anybody on Zoom that would like to comment?
Speaking to our Zoom attendees again, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon or dial star nine. And there's no public comment at this time.
Great. Why don't we put it to vote? Can I get a motion?
Sure, I'll go three for three. A motion to approve. Let's see, what would I call this? This is official zoning code interpretation?
I'll second that.
All right. Do you want to go and take the count?
Commissioner Sparks?
Yes.
Commissioner Gilardi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Long?
Yes. Okay, that passes.
Great, thank you.
Yep, and then we can go back to our agenda. Any reports by staff at this time?
Yeah, I'd just like to highlight, we held the housing fair over the weekend. We partnered with City of Rona Park and the Rona Park Catati Library to have the housing fair on the library property. Great turnout, we had about 135 people come through. We had a first-time homebuyers workshop, there were 39 people came to that. We partnered with Redwood Credit Union and one other local lender, as well as the Housing Land Trust of Sonoma County to do a, and Burbank Housing was, was going to be there, but unfortunately, they weren't able to make it at the last minute. But to do a moderated panel discussion on just what to expect as a, somebody becoming a first-time homebuyer, what affordable housing programs are out there for people to plug in with. We had real-time Spanish translation available that was provided by the library, five people took advantage of that. And we really just, you know, the panelists were all rock stars, and it was just really, I think, well-attended and well-received overall event, and we surpassed the numbers that we had from last year. So we're just building on the success of that, look to partner with the Rona Park and the library again for next year. We haven't set the date yet, but it's likely to be around, you know, September, that seems to be a good time for everybody. And it's a requirement of the housing element. We made a commitment to doing the annual housing fair, this is the third one we've done, and just staff wanted to highlight the success of that, and, you know, trying to partner and leverage resources from other jurisdictions has just really been helpful. And it seems like the community is really appreciating it. And we are trying to target the audience, so last year's was targeting people who were experiencing homelessness or really close to that line. This year, again, homeownership, and then we were able to use some funding to offer, to buy lunch for people who took a survey for us, and so then the results of that survey are going to go to inform where we try to focus our efforts next year. So, yeah, just wanted to highlight that. And then the other thing I'll highlight is we have set the date for the Climate Ready Catati Fair, and I'm trying to pull it up. Carla might be able to remind me.
I want to say it's March 28th.
March 28th, Saturday, that's correct. And so just as a, kind of save the date, again, looking to build on our success from last year, or actually earlier this year, so Climate Ready Catati, March 28th, 2026, again, at the Catati Depot, and it should be a better, or bigger event than even last year, and again, trying to get more activities, more vendors, and really have more resources for folks looking to reduce their carbon footprint and figure out ways they can be more sustainable here in town.
Staff stepped up to save the dates already.
Great, great.
Did the survey, did you guys do a survey last year of Climate Ready Catati?
We have a sustainability survey out.
Yeah, we did do one at the fair as well, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'd be curious to see those as we're preparing for that, just kind of what people are saying.
That's a great idea. We'll have some sustainability committee folks present that to the commission. Yeah, that's a great idea.
Cool. And then this survey at today's, this weekend's event, that those results aren't available yet?
We have, we haven't tallied them yet, but we can come back and present those as well.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Reports by the planning commission?
Nope, nothing for me.
Nothing for me either? And items received after the agenda was posted?
Just the comment letter we got from the Redtail Tattoo, and that's been added to the agenda packet, and hard copies were provided in the chamber.
Okay. I will adjourn this meeting at 7:18. Thanks.
Thank you, great job. Well done.